Recording in progress.
All the orders and regular meeting of the Red Dell City Council roll forward. Mayor Barnes, here.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall, here. Please stand for the legislative committee. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which has passed one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and don't worry, the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Stone Brown Act. I am requiring council actions now listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda. If, for consideration, pardon me, if the council directs unless they find it made by at least two thirds of the council, that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Would anyone like to address the council? And if you could, just, you know, say your name and your address and that would be great. Thank you.
My name's Cal Fisher and live at 210 Bellevue Avenue and my wife Cindy. And the reason we're here is that you guys would look into the post you put on the agenda about waiving the permit fees for all of the earthquake related permits for the permit fees and stuff and.
She just left it out there.
But, and because, you know, we've lost the town, two town hall meetings and, you know, we're, you know, excited to see all the help that we were going to be getting, you know, the community and the citizens and their residences. And because we weren't, but out of our house, it's like, you know, we really, and she's called numerous times, the number that we were given on the town hall meetings and no response has ever, we've never gotten a call back. And, you know, there's all these agencies that were going to help us that were been affected and, you know, the part of it is like, yeah, we don't, aren't looking to, you know, have a big handout with, with helping us with our stuff, but just seeing, you know, all the other relief efforts for, you know, low income renters and, but us as in the middle class boat and the agencies that were supposed to be kind of helping us come through all this, we just haven't seen anything coming from this town hall meeting that they're supposedly set up for us. And we've also done, city's also done research on different communities in California through cities and counties that have waived permit fees for disaster affected areas on helping rebuild homes or rebuilding structures or getting stuff repaired. And so that's what she's kind of handed out in different areas.
So, listening through both of the town hall meetings, our takeaway from that was that people were on the ground, ready to help all the 441-5000 number. They are not ready. I have called weekly and they've taken my information, but there is not anything that's ready there. I don't know that you folks are aware of that. But nothing was in place like it was supposed to be. So trying to get your case manager, I called to get my case manager, they're not ready. In fact, today, I didn't even get a call back and they've cut their hours back.
So anyway, we just would like you guys to consider putting this on the agenda, on being able to waive the permit fees. I know it's not a big thing, but for the people that have been affected, you know, without having earthquake insurance, and probably most people don't, you know, it's out of pocket and stuff that we're already putting out. And so just having a little bit of relief that, so.
Thank you, thank you for having me, thanks for the argument. Anyone else like to?
Ben Koon, 212 Bellevue. I'm just kind of in the same vein as Cal and Cindy. It just seemed like we were getting hit. I mean, it's a, you know, we already got nailed and we're having to find money, get loans and everything else and having trouble with all the agencies and all that. And then to have the fees come in, it's just kind of a kick in the gut. And so it would be really good and it would kind of be a little bit of a bolster for our attitude about everything if something could, we could talk about this, something that'd be done, something.
Thank you. That's the one thing we didn't mention is if you guys consider that, if it would be retroactive to people that have already been charged the permit fees.
Hi, my name is Tom Gordon, owner of 541 Wildwood Shops Coffee. The reason why I'm here today is that I could be put on the agenda about the Elm Lane Waterline that's going down the road. I, Elm Lane Waterline, the line, the water, I know it just sounds like. I was informed a couple of days ago that it won't be fixed until next year, which that's unacceptable for me. We are one of the one and only striving businesses here in town. And every time that that water gets shut off, I have employees that have to be, we close unexpectedly, employees lose wages, but also I have filtration systems in there that is expensive, machines that are expensive. Every time you guys, water line breaks, it flogs out my filters. It can become a safety hazard with the water, the groundwater that comes into my coffee shop. So I would like it to be put on the agenda of why it can't be fixed this year and why is it being pushed off until next year? I keep complaining to Randy, my wife complains, and this is going to be the next step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zach Shaefer. I'm coming on behalf of the Rida File Department. And as some of you may know, we're in the works of remitting the Pelican Playwater Unit and we just got the stage set up. So we just got some grant funding to get a new swing set, a new tile swing and a low excavator. So I'm asking that you put on the agenda to support us in this and help us with the cost of getting a new tile swing. I don't know about long model this, a few minutes, back around. But we just got some grant funding that we're utilizing to get this equipment and the city is able to support us and will also be able to add to the funds and maybe get something moving about. So, thank you.
You guys remember, you might remember a couple of weeks ago, but the sewer thing, okay? I can remember exactly what I asked that day. I remember that, that I asked, by the way, Steven Saunders, that was when Ray Dell, and I remember exactly what I asked. I asked, after you guys passed, don't need to bid in Sewer Bill anymore. And I said, okay, does that mean I will get my money back for the last two months so I can give that money to the person towards utilities for where I am currently staying? And I remember the answer was yes, okay? Yes. So a couple of days after, I go to City Hall here, fully expecting to get a check for $108.56. And I got a form from you guys that night, okay? Took it home, filled it out, came back, pulled it in there and I set it down for the receptionist and she, she took it and she goes, okay, all right, I got it. I'll take care of it. And I'm standing there and I'm going, you'll take care of it? What, what do you mean you'll take care of it? Yeah, I'll take care of it. I'm confused. I don't know what you mean by that. No, credit your account? You'll credit my account? How does that help me? How does that, how can I give that $108 to the person for my staying for some utilities? A credit? I don't need a credit on my account. I need the $108 so I can give it to the person. So the office lady, the door, she, she took it personal, okay? Was I upset? Oh, yes. Was I confused? Yes. And then she goes, I go, why do you take it so personally? She goes, well, you're mad. You're angry. She goes, you're angry. And I go, angry? No, 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 I'm not angry, okay? And then I said, I need to talk to somebody else, somebody higher up. And then this gentleman, Travis, he comes out and he's got the minutes for that beer. He was, it's all right here, it's all in the minutes, okay? There's not one word in the minutes that says you'll get a credit, okay? I'm talking about serious stuff right now. I'm, I'm displaced. And I can't believe that the city did that to me. I just wanted my money back so I could go to the bank, cash the check and give it to the person. I don't understand. I might not be back at my house until next year. Credit my account? I would like the city, the council to vote right now that I can get a check that I can take to my bank, not a credit, that doesn't help me right now.
Well, because it happens that we have a credit for our engine, for New Year's community and like, thank you, Mayor, you know, for your staff, and chief, and, well, of course, and they all are really neat characters and I've seen them, you know, interact with the citizens of your community in the nicest ways. It's, you know, it's really hard to find in all, whole county for the same character quality. And I can, I can relate to urgency and displacement like this gentleman is feeling through and those emotions. My first appearance here was kind of like a camp ball to a pool for today. And thank you for having me back. So I am, you know, considering this as, as a quality of community to, you know, maybe locate to from a mechanical, and I appreciate that. So I picked up an ebook today and it was, you know, quality of leadership stuff. And so some of the first ideas of leadership are to seek out opportunity and shop for ideas. And, and I'm doing that because I'm trying to start a business and I'd like to introduce that to the community, but, you know, I would like to, you know, seek out some advice on who to, about, you know, how to help out and contribute to a community without stepping on toes and, and, you know, trying to understand, you know, maybe the 20 year plan to get a smart path for business and a family and, you know, I just, I really can't say enough about the way I've seen the people at the highest level here react with their citizens. And so, but when seeking out opportunity, there are some doors that close immediately that I don't, should. And so I would like to, I'm sure I'm in a place where I can ask to put anything on the calendar since I'm just another new kid in town, but I would like to maybe network with some folks and get, get the information I need to, to put my next step forward. And I think it's your time.
Just one quick favor. And I really truly think that a little compassion, okay? I don't know who's displaced here, okay? Who can't live in their home right now, okay? But just a little compassion, Frank Wilson here, he shows compassion. Some of you do and some of you don't. Just a little compassion, that'd be nice, okay? I've been here for 10 years in my house, but just a tiny bit of compassion, guys, be creative.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Commenting with your name? I will, well, public.
Mayor? The different people asked if they could agendaize somebody.
Yeah, I have them written down and I was gonna absolutely.
You're gonna do that?
Yes. So now we will, I'm going to look at the consent calendar. Hold on, let me stop. Is this something you want to run an alligator's trust that I want to talk to the city manager?
I'm, I'm, I'm not. You're, I'm not trying to tell you how to do this.
No, I know.
But, but in the past, we have run into the situation if someone came and asked, asked to have something agendaized.
Absolutely.
And, and the council took no action, then we were told that it was not from Mr. Knopf, but from a previous city manager that, that essentially the city had, the council had said no. And so.
Well, that's what we do.
Well, I mean, that's what, I mean.
That's the appearance, that's the perception.
Well, that's what we were told later when somebody brought, they brought an issue to this council and they asked for something, I'm not, I think I remember what it was, it's not important. And then later they came back and they, they said nothing was done about it, it was never agendaized, you know, we're even talking about. And so they came back and they brought it up again and a little bit upset. And so when they brought that up, the city manager told them that you, that essentially had come before the council and the council had said no by virtue of the fact that, that they took, they took the last. And so that's all I'm, I've seen that happen in the past and I just, I don't want it to happen again.
Well, I don't want it to happen either and that's why I wrote everything down that they're all going to say, but if you want to, if you want to as a council, I'll ask your opinion, do we want to? Exactly. It's your opinion. I was, I was, yes, I was actually going to do it, but yeah. So I have every intention of addressing this with the city manager and getting these things agendaized. So is that satisfactory? Then I, and I'm sorry, I agree with you, Councilmember Wilson, that, that is the perception. If we don't act on it now, but I enjoy, that was my intent.
That's a point, I'm not trying to, you know, whatever, but we understand this because we do it.
Right.
All the time and sometimes the public doesn't understand that there's a procedure that you have to go through to make things work. Because there's state laws and all these rules and so that's just all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Councilmember, anyone from the public? Any email? Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So, you have a motion, is there a second? Oh, second, we have a motion at a second. Oh, yeah. Uh, here's some of the, I'm going to carry the files here. Special presentations. There's a presentation, an update from the city engineer for PhD and possible authorization for the city manager to sign, they did or miss something? Staff, that's right. Staff reports, city manager, page 29 in our package.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. You may notice some changes to the agenda. Not so much the format of the agenda, but this is the first rollout of our, our new software for the agenda management setup through Unity Code Civic Plus. And so there are going to be some changes obviously to the page numbering system and then the sections are going to be listed in the upper right for the council moving forward. So not terribly significant changes, but this is also an opportunity if individual council members have any feedback in terms of, of the setup for the agenda, we can more easily make changes right now as opposed to months from now. So this is still a work in progress. Some of the page numbering on the agenda itself had to be manually entered, so we're hoping that that also is, is added in there to kind of ease the process of the agenda compilation. But other than that, I want to make you aware of just that, that simple change in the system. We are also, Red Dell's annual cleanup day is going to continue this year. So that's Saturday, May 13th, the day before Mother's Day, located at the school district parking lot. So people can bring their bulk materials, Red Dell residents can bring their additional bulk or any other waste items up to the school district for disposal. Also, I want to make sure that the council is aware that a new round of hazard mitigation grants is opening up with the potential for guaranteed matches for the city's portion of that. So hazard mitigation is, under federal law, anytime a disaster occurs, a certain set aside of the total cost of those disasters has to be allocated for hazard mitigation grants. And so those are, for example, water tank replacement, water seismic work. In this case, the new round of hazard mitigation grants also appears at the moment to have some climate and energy resiliency components to it. So we are currently working with Red Bull Coast Energy Authority who did the initial study for not just the power resiliency project for City Hall, but also down at the corporation yard. So you may recall, we have had some energy efficiency work done down at the corporation yard, a Tesla battery installed, one remaining component is still outstanding and that's the addition of solar, of a solar project down there. So RCA, RCA, Red Bull Coast Energy Authority did some preliminary work three or four years ago, pre pandemic, in doing those initial studies of what it would cost and what roughly a solar project would look like down there. They're going to update those figures and our intent is to submit a notice of interest, which is a non binding submission so that we can get some feedback as to whether that's a competitive project. I know it's been the goal of the council for quite some time to add energy production down at the plant and solar to help lower the costs and provide a more resilient energy situation down at the plant. Obviously, Red Dell is surrounded by bridges and seismically vulnerable areas. And so right now, we have, you know, between the Tesla battery and the diesel generator, approximately about 48 hours worth of energy resiliency, but obviously the major tanks have off, we wouldn't be able to run the plant, both water and wastewater, much longer than that. So the idea there is potentially to submit a hazard mitigation grant, providing we get some positive feedback as to its competitiveness for that particular project. With that, I'll go ahead and return to the council and see if there's any questions of myself or staff.
Thank you, city manager. No questions, thank you. Looks like you all have been busy. Welcome.
Not, not a whole bunch, but just one comment on the, on the Tesla thing we, we brought up earlier in the study session, or wastewater superintendent. The, with the UV, it's a lot, it's a lot more expensive and it would also be vulnerable to not being able to filter our treatment. And so the, the system that you're talking about with the solar, the solar, all that would be a big advantage to have that tight end of the battery system.
Yeah, so our chemical costs would dramatically decrease, but the energy costs would, would go up. But with solar, they're augmenting that, you know, there's a strong possibility it could stay the same or even, even though we're using more electricity.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm going to look at the solar. I think I'm good on the rest of, I have a question for the police chief, but that was, he's not here.
You know, yeah, just for clarification, Chief of Police is out of town.
Right. So I don't have any questions for him. All right, thank you.
Thank you. With the annual cleanup day, are we going to be learning that? Or?
One of the things we need to issue is a newsletter over the next couple of weeks. We have a lot of information we need to get out to the.
Okay, and it'll only be a certain amount? I mean, at a certain point, it closes it off?
Yeah, so it has specific hours and I can't off the top of my head remember, but I believe it's like roughly 9:00 AM instead of 1:00. And then, you know, it just depends on how many, how, how much you can fill your truck and how, how often, and how often you can circle back, but there's no actual individual limit.
Okay, but that's good to know. I mean, some people might want to get there early because I imagine a lot of people still have some cleanup stuff from here.
You definitely want to go, you don't want to wait till the last minute because when that one o'clock time cut happens, they literally shut it down in a minute.
I hope some people can do, you said that, yeah. So, that's it. One more. No questions. We had questions, man, for the police team. So I will say those and that's done when he's here. Are there any questions from the public? There any emails? I will close. Close the staff report. Now move on to special presentations. Presentation and update from city manager, city engineer, PhD and possible authorization for the city manager to sign three scope for service related to one, Red Dell Neighborhood Dedsec and Nactivity Improvements, two, Douglas Tank and Water System Improvements, and three, Ill River Crossing Pipeline Seismic retrofit project, phase one, entered in a total amount of $2,421,199, page 34 in our package.
So, thank you, Mayor Barnes, members of the council. Rebecca Crowe with PhD, Cities Engineer is here to discuss the provided update, answering questions the council has and then propose the scopes as attached. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you, honey Rebecca, welcome, thank you for coming. Thank you, hi Rebecca, welcome, thank you for coming.
Um, thank you, uh, Serna, thank you, city council for the opportunity to present in front of you today. Um, I'll, I'll go through the slide, but if you have a question on the slide, it's Rachel, and we're at that, and I'm also willing to answer questions at the end. Um, we're gonna go over, talk a little bit about some um uh finishing up and some upcoming transportation projects, um, two major drinking water projects that the city's been pursuing that we now have some funding for. Um, the status of some ongoing wastewater projects. Um, a little bit about uh what GHD is doing to support the city for um, you know, earthquake follow up and damage assessments reports. And then lastly, some future funding opportunities. Wait, 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 wait.
There we go.
Maybe I was pulled into the wrong way. Okay, okay. Um, so, uh, on transportation, these are the active projects that we have going on right now. Um, we have the Safe Roots to School project. This is a, a older project that's finally finishing up. The last little piece is to do a um, uh, the user count. And pedestrian and traffic user count. So just because of, you know, the earthquake and pandemic and things like that, we're working with Caltrans on an acceptable methodology. Once that's done, that project should be closed out. So, um, congratulations. Um, the next one is the Eel River Trail project. So that's the project that we'll um, we'll uh we'll connect in from the end of Edwards over to David. Um, um, along the Eel River. So the design and environmental permitting is ongoing. A lot of what we're doing right now is really looking at surveying, make sure we know where we can put a trail and things like that. Um, and the goal for that project is to start construction in twenty twenty four. And that project is grant funded. Luke Howland in with my office is helping me manage it. I have to check with him which grant we finally got. We submitted it like five times or something like that, and um, there we go, thank you.
And was that, um, did they extend the date because of the earthquake? Because that sounds like it's gonna go.
My understanding is we have an extension request in for that grant, but we haven't heard back yet. Um, and then, um, lastly, as part of, um, the city's participation in uh HCOG, um, there is a countywide project being completed that's funded through HCOG, and they'll, they'll, they're providing like a road condition assessment. So we should get the results of that.
I have one other question on that.
Sure.
Eel River Trail project. Um, the other project is the trees, I don't know, are the engineers involved in that? Okay. Never mind.
Um, okay. And then upcoming project. So one of the items that's on your agenda for approval tonight is the um Neighborhood Pedestrian Connectivity Project. So Riedel was programmed for, you know, a little over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design, construct the Riedel Neighborhood Pedestrian Connectivity Project. I have a map on the next slide, but it's looking at some new sidewalks, curb ramps, just, just a minor improvements here and there. Um, the goal is to, you know, get some of the city's fair share of money that comes into the county. Um, so it's uh eight hundred and nineteen thousand from the state and then forty one thousand from local funds. And, and like I said, the, the agenda's on the council. And then next, you know, we meet monthly with Kyle and the city staff to make sure that, you know, we're on track for all the things that we need. So upcoming, um, we'll be looking at doing some, you know, street enhancement to the position of the city for future funding, looking at Second Street, Elko Street, um, Oval Avenue, and then, and then trying to match those up with uh funding sources. So those are some of the future transportation projects.
And just for clarity, this is, this is mine, I say Elko is actually Elm's.
Sorry. Taking note. Um, so, yeah, please.
You know, for that, for that point on the, when you said the citywide street improvements and you're doing the second half of the study, you're doing the engineering to figure out what it's gonna take, where you fix that.
Very preliminary. The goal is to set it up to be able to then apply for other funding.
Right, and that's pretty, it would have to be preliminarys.
Yes.
But I think we addressed it anyway once before, though we weren't able to go very far because of the cost.
Yeah, and the city's been really good about doing little projects, kind of, you know, every year is funds are allowed. Um, but I know now with certain other cost considerations, with the earthquake in, in particular, I'm really trying to look for other ways to bring money into the city. Yeah. And then, um, yeah, on the next slide here, um, we just have a little graphic of what that neighborhood pedestrian connectivity improvement project will look like. So the blue lines there, you can see, are where we're looking at making improvements. We're looking to add in missing sidewalks, curb, the A ramps, um, similar intersections, um, and, and how the sidewalk turn heads between driveways.
Question. Um, the blue line, that painter or center or kind of?
Yes, in the center is the, is the school.
Yes.
And uh, so yeah, on the right side would be Ironman Street, uh, which currently doesn't really have uh much sidewalk at all. And then all of this is really around the school. So uh, so there's also something built that needs to happen on Center Street in front of the school, and then also a painter. And also to improve the, the cross there between Ironman Cross, we're going to go through the north side.
Is this still called, is this still safe routes?
No, this is HCOG's stip funding, is my understanding. So it's money that comes to the county. And then Stephen Pearl, who works with GHD, is currently the city's representation to the technical advisory committee to HCOG. So part of his job working for the city is to make sure when funds are available that we're, we're hands up. It was actually, um, the person who gave it to him that made sure that we got these funds, uh, Mr. Nathan Sanger. Uh, but, yeah, those are community.
And it was also, uh, this is the, the scaled down version, the ATP grant that we submitted three or four years ago. Um, so because the, the funding for this stip money is, is specific and it's not gonna go up, we had to scale down that. So that work was actually done by Rebecca several years ago, um, uh, for a side, for a uh, a sidewalk improvement project, which I know was one of the council's objectives.
And then when we get to the last slide too, we'll look at, you know, what, what's in the future for training. Any other questions on transportation before I move to the water? Um, to me, these next two slides are very exciting. Um, I've had the pleasure of working with Riedel since the beginning of my career. I've been working here in Hope County for almost twenty two years. One of the first projects I worked on was for city Riedel and a bunch of different things. But in the last couple of years, um, we supported this city in applying for a drinking water safety revolving fund planning grant. And we've leveraged that planning grant in multiple ways. One of those, um, broke the project down into two pieces, and you'll see both those pieces tonight. One piece we submitted for funding to the state water board. So we submitted a construction funding application. So that's what's finally come through from the state is the construction funding application. So a little bit of a lack of impatience, and I really feel sorry for folks who, I wish I could, I wish I could get the state to give me money faster. Um, they're not a very good organization, but we finally got the grant agreement. So this is a hundred percent um, grant funding. The grant is for, um, you know, just under thirteen million dollars. It includes the money for um, finishing off design for a number of improvements throughout town. We'll still work with Randy, because I think there's some work he's had to do in the near term to address the earthquake. So that, you know, that may allow us to do other, you know, other pieces that weren't necessarily in this. Um, but we've got most of the project pretty well designed using the planning grant. And then the other portion is to replace, there's the two tanks of the Douglas site. There's the old two hundred and fifty thousand gallon um redwood tank. So this grant would cover replacement of that tank with a new five hundred thousand gallon unlikely bolted steel tank. And so that's, um, really proud of the city, really proud of all, like, the patience. It took a lot of work. There's so much you have to, okay, here's your other piece of info. Here's your other piece of info. You're constantly and the state was very, very slow at, at turning funds around. So it, it, I, I would be embarrassed a little bit if I were to state it. I don't understand why it takes so long. But it's really great that the city has got these funds. Um, and it's, you know, you can kind of see through time, the investment in the planning, and now on the construction side of it. Are there questions on, on this portion of the project? Next, we're gonna start moving over to the Eel River Crossing.
Yeah, is, is the replacement tank the same size of the redwood tank or is it bigger?
It's bigger. It's gonna be twice the size.
Be five hundred.
Yeah. When is that starting? So there's, uh, see, is there, I don't think I have a bit. Goal would be to be in construction next. Okay. Cause we leveraged the planning funds. We've got design pretty far, especially on the distribution side. And then the tank, a lot of that, you know, will, will be up to the actual final manufacturer. So we're just doing like site prep and kind of, and things like that. So you know, our goal is to have the project out to bid by early twenty twenty four. Um, and that should, that should be doable. Um, just be, again, because of a lot of the work that's gone into it already. And they covered, and the script that we have in front of you covers uh, from sort of where the project is now through, you know, putting together the final bid package, bidding, and then construction management. We do anticipate um, the need for a lot of on the ground construction management. Um, we're gonna attempt, once you open up the screen, start looking at things, all sorts of stuff is gonna happen. So we're gonna want to make sure that we're here to um, support, so they're ready to be doing other work.
Are we allowed to ask a question?
No, um, when the.
I think it also.
Yeah, I will.
I think you should go over.
Yeah.
Just a quick question. I don't even know who the person to address it to. Is it this project starting in twenty twenty four that's holding up repairs on lines for like businesses? Do they have any issues with water? So we're trying to slide normal repairs under the cover of this then, or?
I'm not determined, but this line is actually on the list to get done. And uh, with the funding and everything due to earthquake, it's supposed to be fast forwarded. But now it's still being delayed for a year.
We are, we are gonna ask the state forward, because we do have mostly environmental for this project done, if there's a possibility to move chunks of it forward, but they're not typically open to that. And it also makes it kind of inefficient and cost inefficient, because then you're separating it out a piece. So all, you know, all the admin costs for one piece, but um.
Right.
I, I, I would have loved to have gotten the money sooner and the construction sooner, and I just definitely sympathize.
Trying to find ways to keep businesses from regretting moving to Riedel instead of putting us in harm's way.
Yeah, and, and again, I'm, I'm not your finance director or anything.
No, no.
The hope would be that if, you know, something has to move forward now, that something else could take its place, but we're looking at the long term.
Um, do you have anything that would show the public, uh, what it is that you consider high priority? Water distribution lines and valves? Is, is there something that, I can touch base with the city on what they're willing to share. These, um, this plan set was developed in close coordination with Randy. So, you know, really taking into account what with the existing, um, what the condition of the city's existing heights are. There was a project that, um, formerly was an LGG hand and did, I want to say somewhere between like two thousand and five and two thousand and seven time period. So there was, you know, that there's a lot of major pipelines that were placed in town, but not a lot of the smaller lines. This project was really focusing on a lot of the smaller lines that weren't replaced in that, that part of the project. So the city has the current set of ninety percent design plans that they could share.
Yeah.
I don't have any. Yeah.
So.
And it's, yeah, it's also, yeah, it's also all these little yellow lines, although I, I know that's actually. Are there other questions on your, this one's hard. Oh, okay. It's, it's.
I just, for the homes that are going to be getting a sidewalk in front of it, which is great, the sidewalk, will the homeowners be getting an assessment for contributing to that, or is it covered because it's all grant funded? It would be grant funded. We're not looking at asking homeowners to pay for part of that.
Like, I mean, it's, it's hard, I, I, I was, I was, but that's not my understanding, that the intent was to use the.
I agree, it's really good.
Oh, I, when you're back.
Oh, sorry, um. No, we would not be looking to put an assessment on homeowners to help pay for the sidewalks. The intent was to use the grant funds to get as much sidewalk as possible. Now, I would just like to raise my hand and let everyone know that construction costs are increasing at a very fast pace. So it is likely that we will have our design plans have probably like some additive items or just be looking at those kinds of things, because we don't want to end up in a situation where you have a construction project that you can't afford to build. Um, so we will be looking at some additive items, just knowing that you know, lead times are increasing, you know, materials costs are increasing. That's, that's just what we're seeing in the market, and we can't control that. Right, yeah, the goal is to get as much done as we can. All right, I'm gonna move on to the next water project. Um, so, so Kyle had mentioned hazard mitigation, and several years ago, um, the city submitted two hazard mitigation grants. Um, one was for the Douglas tank, but since that's being covered a hundred percent grant funded by the state board, we decided just let the state board fund it. Um, the other was the Eel River Crossing. Um, currently, there is what's called a yellow line pipe. It was actually, I think, a temporary pipe that was put in the eighties after the earthquake in the eighties. It goes through the southbound bridge, I think, these little stands and things like that. I'm surprised we didn't see more damage, or who knows even what's damaged in there. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it. But we definitely have concerns about that pipeline in the bridge. So we applied to CalOES, um, applied to FEMA through CalOES for funding. And so the city just got their vacation in January that they were um awarded funding. At the time when we applied for the hazard, this hazard mitigation grant in twenty twenty, it was required that the city put in a twenty five percent match and the state pays seventy five percent. Like Kyle mentioned, they have now updated the program. There's options for future projects that we apply for, but this per project in the way that it was set up, the city is required to do a um twenty five percent match. What GHD is doing to help address that is that, um, we are working to submit a funding application to the state board. And the drinking water state revolving fund program that would A, pay for the twenty five percent match, and B, pay for the fact that this cost estimate was put together in twenty twenty. We're, we're both asking for a match and additional funds, knowing that it's likely that costs um, will increase. The way that FEMA doles out the funds is they, they dole it out kind of in pieces. So when you see the word phase one A, essentially, one A is the work that we need to do to figure out um all the final environmental and where we're doing ground disturbance, because essentially phase one B, we want to get some geotech folk out here. We want to be digging, you know, in the ground, and due to environmental regulations, you can't do that until you have approval. So what's in front of you tonight for this project is just that, um, phase one A that gets us to the point where we, we've, you know, we know the project footprint, we have enough environmental information that, um, FEMA can approve it. And again, yeah, again, just really, we're proud of the city, because it takes patience. We submitted these in, I mean, twenty twenty, and then we've been, we've been submitting multiple responses to requests for information. It takes a lot of patience. Um, so that's this project that's moving forward. Other question for this one? More, so, thank you. So next, a little bit on um wastewater. Uh, we continue to have regular discussions with Derek um, on moving the San Antonio revaluation study forward. You've probably heard it a lot. Right now, we have an amendment, you know, with the state to request additional funds that would essentially take that project to almost final design and get it better prepared for construction. We also ask for some additional funding for doing additional camera work or documenting earthquake damage, um, and, and some other pieces. We're all, this is also the, the um project that's helping to move forward on the disinfection um, issues that, that the, that the city's having compliance issues with. So moving forward, um, we did pull a piece out and we're moving it forward towards construction. But before I move to that slide, are there any questions just on the, the general wastewater project and what we're doing there? Okay, so we did leverage the San Antonio revaluation planning study information uh, and put together a clean water state revolving fund construction application for replacement of that painter's street line. Uh, so that's in the state board's hands right now. There's a, um, a little bit of back and forth right now. There's some questions or responding to some questions, but as far as we know. They're likely to fund it. So we're, you know, I'm. State board takes a long time to do anything. So and they actually, they shut down essentially April, May, June. They they shut down. They don't issue any new agreements. They don't issue any funding reimbursements. Um, so I'm hopeful, like, July, August time period is when we'll see the um. The dollars for these. And I know that Derek's anxious to get it constructed as quick as possible. I. No, no, we'll get it in twenty twenty four or not. Or no, we will get it in twenty twenty four. We won't get it in this time. Um. That's outstanding. You'll see that in front of you. Hopefully, we'll see a funding agreement there. Um. You know, again, working to identify areas. And this also has a little bit of a link with some of the earthquake stuff. Because we're also using some of this information to help understand what some of the earthquake damages may have been.
So this is where the overflow, this is the overflow issue, correct?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Okay, and that takes us on to earthquake engineering support. Um, we did meet a little over a month ago with the Cal OES rep. Um, and Travis has done a great job of putting together the list of the city projects. Um, and I think he's gotten a lot of the damage assessment reports in already, some of these larger projects that we really need to think about. Well, what is the cost fix? Um. Wait, oh, that's right. I'm holding it backwards. That's sorry. Um, they're not saying what I'm talking about. There we go. Um. So, yeah, looking to bolster that information. So we know that there's been damage to the city's pouring contact basin. Trying to kind of at least figure out enough to be able to put the, you know, information and damage assessment. Or so that the city can get funds to fix that. Um, we're also looking at the painter street tank. Um, we're looking at including some of the water and sewer highlighted or crossings. This is the wastewater lift station. So right now, you know, again, what we're doing is really being responsive to the city where. Um, the city needs a different support for documenting and really thinking ahead. Because once you get these things in and you've kind of got the dollars in there. We wanna make sure that there's enough dollars to to move over there. Question, yeah. Um, will the Eel River Trail project be impacted by the damaged contact basin? It's right there. The goal is to put a little bridge over that area. I have to look at the designs, but. Earthquake damage or not, we wanna avoid that area. So, yes, we're we're thinking about that. We need double check that with um. Our design, but I'm pretty sure they're looking at a, like, it's just like a little river bridge or something, just to get people from one to the other.
We're like, hey, there's that leaky tank.
We don't, well, and it's, it's a safety health thing.
It's not, yeah. Any other question? And the earthquake damage. Issue, that is not moving the state any faster. I can't get you.
I will say, I will say that I have seen the state board be more responsive. And I think really what Kyle's been pushing is while they, while we have, while the city has the state board's attention, let's push. So. Um, yeah, I've got another coworker who emails, I think, you know, almost on a weekly basis, what's the status of this, what's the status of this? So. I sense a little bit more um urgency on the state's part to help the city. Unfortunately, I I think part of the problem is just the state's process. They're bureaucratic. And I think I've heard they need up to like forty signatures to to write something. It could have been twenty, that's still a lot. Um, so. Yeah, I think we have their ear a little bit more and we're trying to leverage that as much as possible, but their bureaucracy only goes up.
Right? Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Okay, so then the last slide, you know, as we we've talked about here, and one of the things that I've enjoyed working with the city of Rio del in many years is. That linkage between issues and finding funding. Um, I think if you look back through history, my very first project I worked on for Rio del was a Prop two oh four grant funded water supply feasibility study. Um, and we leveraged that into the two thousand and six project where we replaced um lines. So I really enjoy working with the city. Um, and trying to bring funds to match projects. We can't, you know, we do what we can, okay? We can't solve everything, um, but really wanna be taking a look at what are those future funding opportunities? So Kyle mentions the hazard mitigation grant funding. So we've now seen that the city had their first successful application with the Eel River. And they do a, you know, it's a the smaller notice of interest, you submit that, those are due name ten. Um, so it's likely they'll do that for the PD, but I think we'll also be talking about, you know, some potential other stormwater projects or things. There may be a couple of NOIs that maybe worth submitting. Um, also, like Kyle mentioned, they recently had this program called Prepare California. That is covering the match for economically disadvantaged communities. I think the state saw that. That was becoming a burden, especially to, you know, disadvantaged communities. So. We're gonna go to some webinars and see how we can leverage that so it will result in, as opposed to the current Eel River, which is only seventy five percent funded, potentially a project that's a hundred percent funded. Um, and then the full applications are due August fourth. I will tell you those full applications are onerous. They are the most onerous application I've ever worked on. And FEMA changes the application every year just to, I think, just keep us on our toes. Um. But, yeah, the city participated in the local hazard mitigation plan process, so really it needs to continue to leverage that involvement and leverage this program. Um, I think is is a good path. We've already mentioned the state water resources control board. Um, so we will. You know, we're looking at the painter street for the clean water state revolving fund, but once we get a better idea of all, you know, the the major sewer pipes in town that need to be replaced. And we're gonna start pushing that forward a little faster pace, we'll be submitting a construction application to replace those. Um, on the drinking water side, you saw that we we got the grant for the. Um, the small pipeline replacement in the tank, but then we're also submitting the matching grant for the Eel River. So, um, and the state board got a lot of um, the bipartisan infrastructure law funding. And so now's a really good time to be asking them for funding, so we're definitely gonna be looking at that. Um, also looking potentially at community development law grants. Um, we're coming to the city and they've been updating their income survey, and there's some towns where, or some areas of town. And especially for potentially complete street kind of things where you wanna do more than just one utility at a time. Maybe an option. And then lastly. Excuse me, um, looking at the next cycle of active.
Uh, transportation funding. We don't want to do that. Their question? Anyone? Randy's on it. Yeah, I guess. Thank you, Randy. Thank you so much. I was thinking so good. You are, I mean, you're so.
Yeah, are there any other questions? And then, yeah, I don't, Kyle, if you wanna go over, like I said, there uh. In your packet, the page is a little bit, it's page thirty four and forty are the two pages that are his, I'm gonna come up forty, page forty got. Stuck behind the presentation, cuz I'm like, wait a minute. So, yeah, it's got the three different projects on here, the pedestrian connectivity. That one is probably the most urgent because we'd like to get out and do some environmental surveys. Uh, because those need to happen easily. And then the other two are the distribution water tank and then.
Are there any questions? Public? Any emails? Then I'll call for a motion. Renovative, intended to authorize, you voted to authorize the city manager to execute scopes of services. For Rio del neighborhood pedestrian connectivity improvements, Douglas tank and water system improvements. Eel River Crossing Pipeline Seismic retrofit project, phase one A. So, is there a second? Last second. We have a motion and a second. We vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Rebecca. Let's make that better. Drive safely. Thank you. Senator Paul Adams approved for maintenance of an ad hoc committee for per capita grant, dog cart and Clean California gateway duplication grant. Day sixty nine in our packets, in manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garant, and members of the council. So, um. This is related to kind of two of the projects that said we need to get out to bid. Uh, coming up in the very back of your packet or as like of uh. Items here, the large maps. And we'll, we'll go ahead and just start with the gateway one of Rosa. Pull that one up real quickly. Um, what we're just looking for basically is uh for both of the projects, there are some minor details that need to be worked out. Uh, with an ad hoc committee, the board comes back to their council for final approval. So, uh, on your screen and also in your packet. Are some bits in the the design for the uh gateway improvement uh project. Um, so the uh idea here. Uh, is that uh, uh, the council had identified some uh. Needed improvements for the gateway, in particular the tree situation, uh, as as the council's aware. Uh, the gateway, when it initially went in, uh, was really over the old highway. And so it was never really designed to have trees in the gateways. The trees, uh, the vast majority of them have died off. Um, the topsoil is only, you know, two or three inches thick. It's was really designed to be. Uh, a grass thoroughfare, a long thoroughfare. So when the trees were installed, the vast majority of them were installed essentially in gravel. And so there's no water retention primarily, especially during the summer, obviously. Uh, and then there's no nutrient retention um, uh, for the trees. So that's why um, many of them have have died off. Uh, and have not been terribly successful in the ground. So the idea with the grant. Uh, with Clean California is to uh install uh new trees. Uh, but with digouts, um. Uh, but to allow for additional, you know, soil, uh, instead of gravel. The gravel would be removed, soil would be placed for each tree. Uh, one of the particular just problems with this, uh, particular with this project is to, just to make sure the council's aware of it, is the uh, the project that is that. Um, is is expense. Um, so there's a lot of uh. Removal of uh material and a lot of replacement of material in in addition to the trees. Uh, so there may need to be some modification and reduction in the number of trees, but as you can see, there are a lot of trees on each of these uh. Sections. Uh, the plan right now is to submit the RFP as a design. Uh, with a couple of of exceptions. One would be the center median. Uh, trees, these the smaller ones, the ones that are identified in pink color. Uh, to to replace those instead of these kind of smaller trees with uh. Essentially landscaping, either similar to the other medians of town or with the bushes. So that would just be one simple change that we think can reduce some of the costs and still get uh the project done. Um, and there, and then the other concept is in our bid package to also include a variety of the trees. Um, including all those listed here as identified as being wind tolerant, vertical and colorful. Um. Uh, to also add the uh, the trees that are already installed on the south end of town. So those are Acer. I forget the scientific name of them, but they're actually not listed on the on the project, but they have been. Um, good additions to the downtown. So from that, then, uh, after after the RFP is issued. Um, we would then kind of narrow down those those selections, but. In terms of putting out the RFP, we wanna work with um some members of the council before we bring it back to the council for the for the adoption, the RFP. Again, giving us as much leeway in terms of getting this project implemented as possible. On the next page, so that, actually, uh, on this, on your screen, or let's go back there. So that's how we want to want to be, uh, right sides, the north is is uh towards the top of the screen. And this is the initial gateway. You can see, we already have a a digital sign there that was not incorporated in this particular design. We also have. Our Rio del uh entryway sign, and so there are gonna have to be some modifications to that portion of the design. And then on the next page. Uh, the design goes all the way through to City Hall. And then you'll also see uh an exercise station uh across the street on Memorial Park here. So that's the total scope of of the project. Uh, again, there are ways that we can probably eliminate some of the uh trees out of it to reduce the cost. Um, for example, uh, the the row in front of City Hall. Um, there's already kind of, we already have a pretty good working uh tree situation in front of City Hall. Uh, but again, this is a clean California grant, uh, designed to further beautify uh the the gateway. And uh create a a better uh space. Um. And so if there are no questions on that, uh, Kevin.
Yeah.
On the next. Yeah.
How does the exercise equipment fit into the beautiful kind of thing?
So that was one of the requests that was added in uh as part of the the application. And so. You know, what we're trying to do is create uh. A, you know, a healthier, I believe there are elements to Clean California, talking about healthier environments and healthier people. But it was part of the grant application that was approved.
And it was to our community get healthier. It was to approach, um, um, promote, um. Places where community members can get together, do some exercising and um. And through our, you know, this is through the health of the community.
Hold you in my garage. My question was, why was one piece of equipment? Was that just a block of granite? Is it a good starter?
I didn't.
I'm trying to be negative. I'm just trying. It's it's all attached. It's a push-up bar, chin-up bar.
So that that particular diagram is not necessarily what exactly is gonna go in there. Uh, but these uh facilities can be quite pricey, so it would have to be something limited. Uh, you know, not, you know, full blown, you know, park, um. Uh, but something to add, you know, calisthenic type activities for people who don't have those.
I am.
I was hoping I wasn't the only one. Small step for man, kind of like.
Uh, and so Rosa wants to pull up the next slide. There we go. Um, so this is the uh on Ireland, uh, they have a corner uh right there on your screen is uh Painter in Ireland. And so uh to the right side of the drawings would be Highway one oh one. Uh, the southbound lanes. So this uh is a property that the city has been working on for some time now to essentially create uh an actual parcel. It was just. Uh, a piece of inventory that was created. Uh, you know, the highway went in and then transferred over to the ownership of the city. So looking at different parcels where uh we can implement a park facility using the uh park per capita grant. Um, this was what what ended up rising to the top uh as a city controlled parcel. So at the top, um, you have to see a landscape area then moving down uh on the screen, and Rosa's able to do that.
Uh, you can just reduce the scale probably. It's a what, one, twenty, five or something, but hit the minus button, hit the left there.
Any more slides?
Yeah, just reduce it to what comes out. So. There's a minus button.
There's a minus button to the ladder, you go down one point five, there you go. So yeah, scrolling down, you'll see that there are essentially two zones for the dog park. The upper area is obviously the larger dog run. And then the lower area is, is for smaller pets. So to keep this mixed use and try to encourage different uses, on the far bottom section is a, the space allows for a half basketball court. So there have been a number of complaints that the basketball courts at the school were closed after, after hours, after school hours. And so being adjacent to the school seemed like a logical choice of recreational amenities. Let's go ahead and reduce it to half size. There we go. There you go. So there, you can see the, the furthest lower extreme. And so Kevin, you have anything to add to that?
You know, the lot is all the sloping, obviously slopes towards the freeway there. So we should see just north of the basketball court, there's a retaining wall that's going to have to be built on the north side and then on the east side, a large part of that space. We're going to have to import some fill in that area as well. The idea here is to provide that, that recreation facility primarily due to the fact that for some reason, the school basketball courts are closed a lot of the time. And we basically provided a couple picnic tables, three picnic tables, and, and some benches, there's two benches in each, one of the dog run areas as well. That there is a cross-section of that in the north retaining wall. And you can see where the high elevation up near Ireland has got a base elevation of a hundred and twenty-six feet, I believe. And then it slows down to a hundred and twenty feet. So there's a slope of six feet and a run of sixty feet. The retaining wall is probably going to be a large portion of the project. And the grant amount is for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, basically. And the sidewalk is going to be constructed along Ireland as part of that other active pet project that the city engineer spoke about earlier. So that does not have to be incorporated into this project as well. We don't keep this out of bid within the next month or so. I'm actually trying to put together materials right now so we've got some solid, at least material items so we can get some solid numbers when this goes out to bid. And we just want to get some input from the ad hoc committee on how we want to release this and what our priorities are. We may have to do some additives or have different options, you know. One of the options may be not to put any of those benches around. Those benches are basically those hill quicker pre-caps benches. They're roughly seven hundred and fifty dollars each. The picnic tables are roughly a thousand dollars each right now. I did give one bid for our five-foot cyclone fencing, and this is just materials only, and it's about eight thousand dollars. Installation, of course, is going to cost more. It does include some trash recycling bins, some parking spaces. There has to be some drainage improvements made as part of the project as well. A water fountain, a doggy fountain at the bottom of it. And then some landscaping associated with Long Ireland there. And then a couple trees near the parking area, you know, the north end of the project side as well. There's any questions, anything more than half to answer?
I got a question.
Okay, just a question. Um, any question? Can you come on, please? Thank you.
I was wondering, how much of the RFP on this dog park going to cost, let's see, for five years, for ten years, right? It's a dog park, you got to keep the lawns cut, we got to, you know, we don't just build it and then we're done. So does anybody look down the road at all, that, that part of the whole thing? Just curious.
The lawn's already there, so it's, you know, I don't have any numbers.
Actually, apparently we already mowed that lawn, so there would be no additional maintenance and maintaining the lawn. The basketball itself is concrete, it should have a fifty-year lifespan, at least.
So it shouldn't be causing a studio of, 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 of that dog park there? See why? It shouldn't cause a studio, an extra dime to have the dog park maintained.
Well, I didn't say that.
Well, that's what I'm asking. There's going to have to be some maintenance involved along the line, I mean, right?
Other than the line that's going on right now.
That's, 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 that's a good answer.
You have the person.
That's, that's actually up to the responsible pet owner.
The pet owner is supposed to do it?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's, that's, that's a good answer.
That, that's a hundred percent acceptable.
So if they don't, what do we do? Other responsible pet owners, you know, for them?
Man, I, you know, I don't know, I would probably have to reach out to Fortune and see how that operates. If I'm working out for that.
They have a small business, a few guys out, was that for everybody else? It's reasonable for what the mayor said, that they take responsibility for it. I don't know how it works with the rest of town. They, I see you have the bags and the stuff.
I do actually see some residents carrying their, their bags, which is actually a nice thing to see.
That's good.
I've been personally to the fourteen oh one and everybody does pretty good about picking up out of their dogs. This is a basketball court, half basketball court and a dog park at the, at the same location. Yeah, okay. What about, this is absolutely a great idea for the city, especially for all the kids that you see play basketball that are out on the side streets, they're everywhere. And I know that they've, I've been with the basketball team for a while and, and the kids look for stuff like this to do. What about, my suggestion would be for like the picnic tables that are seven hundred dollars or seen about if some, if people donate them, if they put their names on them, they're local things like that. Idea.
Thank you.
Hey, Jonathan from here. Uh, yeah, just this idea, one thing, if they're going to have benches and stuff, people want barbecue, where's the restrooms at? Where are the kids going to go use, go pee?
There are no restrooms, so that's something probably to talk about, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars is going to cover all that, but that's a feature too. And as far as the exercise equipment, I always thought it'd be cool where, you know, we could do the trail in time too, is they have communities where you go every half-mile is another calisthenic exercise that you can do. So that would be where you could incorporate that instead of just having one dinky thing right there. Then you can make it where they can do their jogging and their, and their exercises. But, you know, I think restrooms would be necessary, otherwise it's going to turn into, you know, a stinky mess over there.
Yeah, you might wash it.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, we have the fire department, you know, there's obviously issues over there too. So that would require additional help from the city to help maintain those, but, or volunteers from the community just to go and take care of it, so.
I don't want to get back and forth or anything, but I haven't been to a dog park that has a bathroom.
Right, but, but, granted, you're going to have a basketball court, people are going to stay longer, you have benches, people are going to have their lunches, you know, you can even set up a lot of places that have those standing barbecues where, you know, you could, people can do family outings there, you know, like it's a private park.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Are these two different ad hoc committees or is it one?
If we could do one, that would be really helpful.
Wait, are you saying, so there's a beautification committee already, if you want a committee, an ad hoc committee for this, you see these two specific things?
So, so, yeah, both of them, either of these projects were in the purview of the beautification committee, so they were, you know, authored for application directly by the council. So my recommendation would be that the ad hoc committee be composed of the council, really just to do these final last tweaks so that two council members can come back to the council and say, I can support this. It's just kind of the final check before this goes out.
I definitely want, definitely, I don't know.
I'm the exercise, I'm the beginning. I, I'm going to argue that since I have much favor on the exercise world, that I should be on this committee also.
No.
I know.
No, not me, I'm a problem.
I don't have to be on it. It's okay. If somebody else really wants to do it.
I don't really want to.
No, I don't.
I guess. That's a dependent.
When it ends?
When?
When it ends, well, you have to, we have meetings, we have a meeting when exec, when staff. It isn't.
Is able.
Yeah, but the staff sets the times for staff because they can't do overtime and everything, so it's usually during staff time, so.
So ideally, what we want to, the quickest we can do it is for our next meeting and to bring it back to the council is in May. We'd like to do the, the ad hoc committees preferably even sometime this week or even early next week. And then we have to do the final, you know, agenda publication the following week, so, or next week. So we have to, you know, but we can hold meeting, you know, at four or whatever is convenient for the, for the ad hoc committee members, but we're kind of hoping to do this in the next ten days or so.
Matt believes that you do that.
Okay, I'm available.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, no more else. Everyone, Frank. Have you all pay with? My thoughts with Amanda. Here. Amanda, today. Many will be, and some Amanda. Okay. So, all right, we have a thing, I think that's, that's it. That's it. I have a, I have someone. When it starts to drive.
This is the special resolutions. Approved resolution number one five nine seven dash twenty twenty-three authorizing the county of Humboldt to administer the city C D D G and Cal Home projects and programs, including the city owner occupied and rental rehabilitation program. Page seventy-three in our packet, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garant, members of the council. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Paul.
Mayor Garant, members of the council, you may remember your meeting in February seventh, your council actually authorized the city manager that to keep that M I U agreement with the county. County recently requested formalized a possible revision via resolution. As such, we bring to you resolution number fifteen seventy-nine, twenty twenty-three, formally authorizing resolving that we work with the county on the Cal Home and the C D G programs where the owner occupied and rental rehabilitation company. And as such, we recommend you approve resolution fifteen seventy-nine, twenty twenty-three. And if you have any questions, that'd be more than half to answer.
Question, is that a city? And then it's what you're doing. I just want to know, like I said, I see. Yeah, any questions?
No.
Okay, member of the republic, any question?
Well, just had, I have to say your name. And then, uh.
The city and the county work together?
C D D G.
Yeah, the, the C D D program is, as the city engineer talked about, one of the state programs, it's clearly ours, and you're almost a dedicated full-time staff for to give up on all the changes. So in order to make the best use of time, we are partnering with the county to administer the city C D D program. They actually have the staff, the resources, the capacity to administer it in the months out.
And that's the staff that's been in training to help folks like myself because I'm, I'm part of the owner occupied rehabilitation loans and I'm second on that list.
Yes, so you probably work with Chris, maybe, or Andrew.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's been great.
Yeah.
Down to the twenty-eight page application and I'm waiting for my business to go to the mail, I'm going to handle it, hopefully the market.
That's exactly what it's about.
Perfect.
Here's the ball rolling.
Very close to the question. Seventy-nine, twenty twenty-three authorizing the county to administer the C D D six, C D D and Cal Home projects and programs, including the city owner occupied and rental rehabilitation program. We have a motion in their side of the country. A motion for the second, motion carries five zero. Introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance amending chapter ten point five, use of streets for storage of vehicles prohibited, sections ten point five point five three zero of the Red Hill Municipal Code, page seventy-seven in our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Garant, members of the council. I'm again going to turn over to Mr. Paul.
Look, Mayor Garant, members of the council, this is actually coming to do community services officers' responsibilities. She has brought this to our attention that when she's out enforcing the parking regulations, which requires a car to move every seventy-two hours, these cars are literally moving a foot or two to basically avoid the intent of the regulation. And so what we suggest is some language here to tighten that up. And that starts on page seventy-eight. What you see, ten point zero, five point five three zero, use of streets for storage of vehicles prohibited, everything in blue is additional language. And the intent here is. Minimize, in order to avoid. So again, the mayor indicated this is the first reading. I would recommend that you continue this item to the main second meeting or the second meeting in adoption unless there are any questions from the council or members of the public that I could answer.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. And I think this is great that you're doing this because we've talked in the past to previous police chief and even in our current police chief, that people were taking really big advantage of the, and, and for a period of time, I had some people living in front of my house, because there's a long, there's a long stretch there of, or the metal boxes on the law. And they had, I don't know, a lot of cars, whoever owned, whoever was doing this, was, they referred to them, cheap cars, and they were carpooling. And what they did is they moved cars around the city, but they, they got to the point where they were living in these cars, they were taken. There was two or three of them they had in front of the house and they would go, they had blankets and pizza boxes and all that stuff. Every morning you'd get up and they would, they would rearrange one or two of them, but there was always one that was there for a long period of time. And so because they do this only movement of foot or, or whatever, they've been, the police have been limited to be able to do anything. And so this will, this will be a big step. I mean, they'll figure out a way to flush the police, but this will, this should hopefully lower that they're not doing what they shouldn't be doing.
I think so, and I should mention that we actually took this to the new committee, or the traffic committee, I'm sorry. The business committee as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was overwhelmingly supported by both committees.
I agree with you.
It's a visibility safety thing too, I think.
Absolutely.
My only question is, how, is there anything in the law that prevents them from just driving away for a few hours and then pulling it right back in the same spot? I know it says, but the people that use the vehicles and they go to their job and then they come and they park it there for three days.
use the vehicles and they go to their job and then they come and they park it there for three days and then they go to their job and they come and they park it there for three days. It's saying that it's still the same visibility issue and same.
Assuming.
Issue. Yeah, assuming that's the name of the question. I would have to defer to the police chief for that one. And I hope that he's around on the meeting of committee second. And um we could ask him that question at that point. I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor Doran. No, no question. I like it. We appreciate that all the work those stood into us. Um so is there um I think I have to have a motion and then consider.
Yeah, I'm ready. The second.
Continue. I saw the second up to the first meeting of May. We have a motion. Is there a second? A motion of a second with the hurry. Um, help me, Wilson. So we um we got a motion on the floor to. Yeah, motion carries five zero. Council reports and communication, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Uh I attended a meeting of the Redwood Regional Hydrodynamic Development Commission on March twenty center. We heard from the offshore wind people. Um nothing was very concrete or um specific. Their most specific feedback was this isn't terragen. So.
This is a one.
Terragen, the the other one. So um it it sounds like that is moving along. Um there was a whole and lots of work from that. And we have a distance meeting tomorrow here at three P M. That's it. Thank you.
That's the rule.
Um have the H C O this Thursday. Um if they let me into live, I will be back next week.
Something for a little.
Yeah, I went to the um the records of the fire department meeting last week and um as usual, they've had a lot of calls and I I cast the.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, there was a lot of call.
Dude, thank you.
And um I can't think of anything else that's been going on. There's been some good things going on at the resource center downtown. Lots of lots of good things. People meeting, people coming the um we have the senior luncheon and more people are coming. It's nice to interact with the different people and just lots of other things going on down there. And then we have the, what is it? The CRT?
The uh community training will be the last weekend of April. We're so.
Yeah.
And I think there's still four seats.
Oh, great. I think there's still six seats open. It's a three day thing and you can.
Um can I just ask, what what did you just say? Are there still open seats?
Yes, there's there are still four seats. Um I spoke with Linda today. Um well, I'm gonna say three seats because she asked about um one of the seats. So I think there are three seats still available.
And do you know if they're mostly from our area?
Yes, um I think they're um mostly from us and then I think there might be one or two people from Fortuna who are already in the program. Um and just need to finish up a few things from the fire department. Um yeah, so but most everyone is ready to afford perhaps other. I don't know that actually.
That's all for me. Okay, thank you. Help me, Wilson.
I have a I had an H W M meeting last week. This uh coming next week, we have another H W M meeting. We're doing the budget. And also R C A meeting on on the second day. So it's gonna be a interesting one, but um the budget, if you go to H W M and you're calling we which is garbage, you're probably gonna see a lot of crazy. They're checking fees. And um with a lot of the stuff that people are bringing in or to get it out. And then also the uh they're working on this thirteen eighty three thing to uh to they resurface the floor so that they can handle the amount of organic waste that comes in. And this is the thing that was brought up in the meeting is that most of the people in the county don't realize every day H W M A in conjunction with, I believe, recollections takes up ten uh chip truck field that that we're used to seeing. They take ten, ten of those a day and go out three hundred sixty five days a year. That is hauled out of Hummer County of Baltimore. It goes up to White City where there's a landfill that they haul out. And so.
In California?
It's that's what we're trying to buy that. And uh but the in the amount of the amount of cost to do that is is pretty monumental because you gotta haul out and there's a battle to bring. What do you bring back in a chip truck now? You know, bringing it back in a chip. Used to be you used to cook the chips, but you had to take it up to it. And so um this is the step towards the by getting that um surface and then immediately they approve surfacing the floor. There's like this I'm gonna say it's pushing half a million dollars to resurface the floors and the doors. The doors are welded open from the way that the the old garbage stuff was done. And now it's being turned into this organic um facility to where they can move the organics out of it until they can build an organic processing system in the county. And there's plans to do that to where they will actually probably bring in organic processing because every city in the state is gonna have to deal with the organics. And if you don't, if you don't do it in a collective like it's done here in Hummer County, every city would be responsible. Actually, every city is responsible for that. You know, there there's an executive committee, which is I think here, I believe, on the on the executive committee that's composed of all of the, I believe, the city managers um of the county. And so they overview this as well as uh the H W M A is. So it's got a lot of eyes and it's a big deal to the people how you're gonna you're gonna process that like this floor said, you're you're gonna have to process the those chicken bones and extra mash taters you need. Uh those are those are considered organic along with the weeds that um you put in your greenwiches. So that has not the idea is that doesn't go in the landfill because it creates a horrendous amount of methane gas to when it goes.
Thank you. Um and I have nothing I that other than I was at the disaster traumatology training today and tomorrow in Blue Lake. Um Sarah from the community center, resource center. Sarah's attending. Heather from B H S is attending. Um gentlemen, Andrew from Red Cross is attending. There are a lot of people who are here supporting Red Dell at this disaster traumatology training, learning how to better help people get through the any kind of um um emotional issues related to any disaster, fire, earthquake, flooding, anything um so that we can better serve the um the the public in times of disaster. So that's what that is that is about, the the training. And um and that's it, I think. So the motion to adjourn.
Eighty.
Well, I mean, there's it's the end of the agenda and we are on the way to follow the agenda.
So what I was told at the last council meeting was I was going to do
I understand.
So you might just left out in the.
No, no. We will. We are going to address it. I said that at the end of the comment of the public comment. It's not only agenda, it's an actual legal thing that we could be in violation if we just start dealing with things that aren't agenda. I said to you, well, I said to you that we will talk, we will we will agenda these things and we will. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to draw. I'm telling you what the law is and that's the law. I I I I know. Could turn until May second.